Good evening and welcome to the September 3rd City Council meeting. And we have to consider and take action on a request from a council member to participate in a meeting remotely due to an emergency circumstance pursuant to Government Section 54953 F1. We need to receive this notice, and so bear with us while we meet the law. At this time, I will ask our city clerk if any notifications or requests for virtual meeting participation have been received from any members of the council.
Mayor Haskew, notification from Mayor Pro Tem Darling has been received for virtual meeting participation.
Thank you, city clerk. Mayor Pro Tem Haskew? There's a little, no wonder I was thrown aside. Mayor Pro Tem Darling, would you please address the council?
Thank you, Mayor Haskew. I am asking for just, or I am looking for just cause. I have been advised by physician that I should not be around other people tonight due to contagious illness. I will have my video and my audio on throughout the meeting, and there is nobody here in the office with me, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. City clerk, you have some information to share?
Yes, for the record, I will note that at least four members of the council are present in the chamber. Mayor Pro Tem Darling has not exceeded the annual limits for remote attendance, and the city is providing a two-way audiovisual platform via Zoom, so the public can remotely hear and visually observe the meeting.
Thank you, and bear with me, there's another thing I have to do, given the circumstances. So, welcome to the September 3rd regular meeting of the City Council. The council is conducting the meeting from the City Council chamber. This meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the City Council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled "Public Communications," which is for the Public Communications for Non-Agendized Items. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session of the meeting if necessary. If you desire to provide a public comment, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Wait your turn, and when you approach the lectern, please state your name and city of residence for the record. You will have two minutes to address the City Council. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. The City Council Handbook outlines decorum expected in the City Council chamber and can be found on our website. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council. Please do not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The City Council, oh, sorry, that was the same one. Okay. Now, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Francois?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Darling?
Here.
Mayor Haskew?
Here. Okay. Now, we have a special item, and that is the Oath of Office, and the city clerk will run that.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Karen Basting.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Welcome, and do you have any comments or any conversation that you'd like to share with us?
Just thank you very much for the opportunity to serve as a commissioner on your Design Review Commission. Some of you know I have had a 25-year career in commercial and residential development in real estate, and some, a lot of that was urban infill mixed-use and multifamily housing. I'm also a Bay Area native, fourth generation, and grew up here. And my father actually worked his second job when he was, worked for the county during the day at the assessor's office. He worked cap wells at night on Broadway Plaza back in the 1960s. So, I'm looking forward to serving you all.
Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere, council is going to join you up in front of the dais, and we're going to have a picture. why we're proclaiming it. Whereas service dogs play an integral role in enhancing the quality of life for individuals with disabilities and medical conditions, those remarkable animals are specially trained to perform a wide range of tasks that might help mitigate the limitations faced by people with disabilities, including insisting with mobility, providing alert and medical response, and promoting a greater sense of independence. Whereas service dogs are trained to navigate public spaces, ensuring safe passages for their handlers, and are highly skilled at remaining focused in calm and busy and sometimes stressful environments, service dogs have demonstrated their invaluable contributions in various fields such as guiding individuals with visual impairments, alerting individuals with diabetes to rapid shifts in blood glucose, alerting people with hearing impairments to important sounds, assisting those with physical disabilities in everyday tasks, offering support to individuals with psychiatric conditions, and aiding veterans and first responders in their post-traumatic recovery. These incredible animals not only provide practical assistance, but also offer unconditional love and companionship, providing overall well-being and mental health of their handlers. Service Dog Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recognize and appreciate the dedication, hard work, and incredible impact of these service dogs, as well as the trainers, organizations, and individuals who contribute to their training and care and support. Whereas raising awareness about service dogs helps dispel misconceptions, increase understanding, and foster acceptance within our communities, ensuring the rights and access of individuals with disabilities and their service dogs are respected and protected. Now therefore, Ilawella Haskew, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek Council, to hereby recognize September as Service Dog Awareness Month and encourage citizens, organizations, businesses, and schools to participate in events and initiatives that raise awareness and promote education and celebrate extraordinary contributions to these service dogs. And I believe there is someone here who is going to take the proclamation, and it might even be one or two people, so please come forward over there and introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening all, and thank you for inviting us to be here today. My name is Eric Wagner, and I am a member of the Board of Directors for Early Alert Canines in Concord, and I'm also a Walnut Creek resident. I am joined today by Early Alert Canines interim director, Alicia Santos, and future client and service dog handlers, Kim and Amelia, and Early Alert Canine Scarlett. She's also a medical detection dog. Additionally, we have members of Joy Bound with us who similarly focus on the training and placement of service dogs. September is recognized in the United States as National Service Dog Month. In the city of Walnut Creek, there are numerous service dogs, handlers, puppy raisers, foster families, all working together to improve the quality of life for our community. On behalf of these groups, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize September as Service Dog Awareness Month in our city. Service dogs help improve health and well-being of their partners, and their positive impact on the entire community is exponential. Some of the ways in which they do that include promoting inclusion and accessibility, enhance quality of life, supporting mental health, assisting in emergency situations, boost independence and self-confidence, and educate and raise awareness. At Early Alert Canines, our mission is to improve the health and safety and well-being of people with insulin-dependent diabetes through partnerships with certified low blood sugar alert dogs. Today, we proudly represent our own organization, which is based in Concord, and has been serving people for more than a decade. Additionally, we recognize that today, we also represent the service dog community as a whole. On behalf of that group, we are grateful that you are willing to recognize September as Service Dog Awareness Month in the city of Walnut Creek. The recognition validates the valuable contributions of these service dogs, as well as many of the people within our community who provide training, veterinary care, and a loving home.
You don't get to go anywhere. First, you get to your proclamation, so now we'll have to move glasses. Oh, wait a minute. Will everybody, oh, Joy Bound?
Yes.
Come and talk, yeah, a little bit.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Haskew. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, councilmembers, for recognizing September as Service Dog Awareness Month. My name is Anna Gosh. I am the Senior Director of Communications and Marketing for Joy Bound People and Pets right here in Walnut Creek. And I am joined by Alex Abrahamson, who is one of our trainers for our psychiatric service dogs in our Shelter-to-Service program.
Thank you. Joy Bound Shelter-to-Service Program uses the power of the human-animal bond to address the mental health crisis. Fifty-three percent of Americans reported that mental health is their primary health worry. Meanwhile, eighty-seven percent of pet owners report that animals improve their mental well-being. While any animal can provide much-needed companionship, psychiatric service dogs offer a lifeline to those battling mental health challenges, drastically enhancing their independence and security. At Joy Bound, we train our service dogs to become psychiatric service dogs, train professionals capable of assisting individuals with mental health conditions such as depression, anxiety, PTSD, agoraphobia, and beyond.
And we welcome everyone here, as well as our broader community who is interested in learning more about transforming shelter dogs into psychiatric service animals, to an open house that we are hosting on our campus on September 14th, Saturday, September 14th, from 10:00 to 1:00. And Ellie has some materials, if you're interested. We would love to have you come, meet some of our psychiatric service dogs in training, some of our amazing trainers, as well as other partners and other mental health, mental emotional health and wellness professionals. Thank you.
You don't get to get away, because we're going to have a picture taken. Come, come, council. Counsel, please don't get too comfortable, we've got another one. Let's see. And this is, this is near and dear to my heart as well. Whereas the Diablo Valley Certified Farmer's Market, held weekly on Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Shadlands, was established in 2011. It is operated by California Farmers Markets, a nonprofit organization that operates 15 certified markets in the San Francisco Bay Area. The mission of the Diablo Valley Certified Farmer's Market is to provide viable direct marketing outlets to California family farmers. The Diablo Valley Certified Farmer's Market is a location approved by the County Agricultural Commissioner where farmers sell only those fruits and vegetables they grow themselves. Access to friendly picked, excuse me, freshly picked, local produce, combined with family-friendly events enhances and promotes a direct connection between producers and consumers while facilitating conscientious food choices for families and communities. Choosing the food less traveled lightens the draw on fossil fuels and accomplishes sustainable food distribution to local residents. And whereas, the Diablo Valley Farmer's Market was voted California's number-one favorite farmer's market in the American Heartland, American Family Trust 2023 Favorite Farmers Market Contest. Good God, just saying the title means you win something. And is consistently ranked among the top 10 farmer's markets in the state each year. Now therefore, Ilawella Haskew, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, do hereby recognize Diablo Valley's Certified Farmer's Market on its 15th anniversary and extend our appreciation for the positive impact of the weekly event that has, that has on our community and the business it facilitates for local family farmers. You guys are great. Would somebody come forward to get the? And nobody leaves, because you need a picture.
And Mayor, may I just say that living on that side of town, the Saturday Farmer's Market is so widely attended, everybody from Walnut Creek, that direction, and Concord go there, and I'm happy that I am able to go and have office hours a couple of times a year, and I'll be there on September 28th, and it's great to see people there. Congratulations.
Good evening, my name is Gail Hayden, and this is my husband Doug Hayden, and this is the market manager Warren Cox, and he is, lives the closest farm here for cattle, which is Patterson. So he has 300 head of cattle and comes and runs the market on Saturday morning, so thank you, Warren. I just wanted to say, I was born here in Walnut Creek, so I'm a settler, I think, because of 1955. And I left and went off to college and came back eight years later, and got back to Walnut Creek, and people said, "We need a farmer's market here." And I go, "Well, there's already one downtown." And they said, "No, we need one out this way, we need one out this way." So after I had already started 12 markets around in mostly the San Jose, San Francisco, Mountain View, Saratoga, Maraga, Rossmore, we, the day after somebody had called about doing a farmer's market, they said, Park Shadlands called, they said, "We would love to have a market." I went, "Oh, my gosh, this is like a coinketing." So, so we started the market, we did a community survey, and people said they wanted parking, shade, local products that was fresh and flavorful. And we did all of those things, and they wanted events. And so we have, we have a little, little video thing to play, if, if, there it is, and it just shows some of the events that we do. And one of the things we do is subliminally, we're educating children about eating healthy in our craft program. And so we do, we have about 250 kids come through, four hours on a Saturday morning, and we're teaching them about vitamin C, eating strawberries instead of chips and, and things that aren't healthy for them. And we have the Kids' Day, we do the watermelon eating contest, we have the costume parade, which is a huge deal, and we have the most famous Santa all around, because the Santa interviews each child, which you'll get to see up in the, in this, this is a reel on Instagram. And so we have, I don't know, Warren, how many, we have 75 trucks, 70, 70 trucks? Truckloads? And our crowd count can easily get to 4,000 people, and it becomes, it's very popular, and people love it, and you know, an interesting point, all 17 of the handicapped parking spots are used many times. That's how many people, because they can literally walk 10 steps into a market, so they love it. And so I thank all of you, I've been doing this since 1979, and, oh, look at that little one, and I had to put her in there. She, oh, the corn husking contest. We're doing everything we can to get non-screen time for children. And so they husk the corn, that's the zucchini car races, and that's very popular. And Warren wants to say a few words.
Hello, my name is Warren Cox, and I'm the manager of the Diablo Valley Farmer's Market. I just want to say how happy and grateful I am to be here tonight. The Diablo Valley Farmer's Market has played a big part of my life for the last 10 years. I first started out as a vendor there, and about four years ago, I took over managing the market, and I'm just so happy to see how the market has grown over that time, and I'm just so proud to be a part of it. So for the last several years, the market has ranked consistently in the top five market, favorite farmer's markets in the state of California, in the American Farmland Trust annual contest, and last year, we were so proud and happy to be voted the number-one favorite market in the state. And I'm really proud of this, and this is really meaningful, because the ranking is determined by customer votes. So it just really goes to show how much the community loves and supports this market and appreciates all the work we do out there. So again, I just want to say thank you. A thank you to the city of Walnut Creek for recognizing us today. I want to thank Gail and Doug Hayden, as well as the whole team at the California Farmer's Markets Association. I want to thank our friends at the Park Shadlands Kaiser, who lets use their parking lot every Saturday. I also want to give a big, special thank you to Linda Kolberg. And of course, I want to thank the entire community of Walnut Creek for coming out and supporting the market every week. So thank you all, I hope to see you all at the market this Saturday.
I'm sorry. I have a public, oh, I've been looking forward to this, we're going to have a public safety update, so would the people who are updating us about public safety step forward and help us out? Thank you.
No people, just me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jamie Knox, Chief of Police, and it's my pleasure to give you a public safety update this evening, which will highlight some statistics from 2023, some trends we're seeing, and some current initiatives we're working on. First, I wanted to start with our mission statement. So our mission is community-focused, and we protect and serve the community through professional conduct and proactive enforcement of the law. And our brand is much more than our patch or logo, and it's certainly much more than our utility. Our values include professionalism, integrity, respect, safety, service, and honor. So our visual identity is part of our brand, and about a year ago, we began changing our fleet graphics to better reflect our current uniform and our brand. This is our new primary fleet color scheme, and it's represented in silver, which is the color of our officer badge. And I'm really proud of this next transition, because I worked really hard on it. If you watch the screen, you'll see it transition to gold. Now, this is our even newer color scheme around town, and this is because we just rolled out this new version of our graphics for our supervisor car. In those vehicles, the gold represents the gold badge that our sergeants wear. So it's kind of a tip of the hat to the sergeants. And recently, we rolled out our annual report for 2023, and that is available for download on our website, and I wanted to take just a few moments to highlight some statistics from the report. So this is five years of crime data we're looking at now, and when looking at overall crime numbers, we have a current trend of our property crime going down and our violent crime going up. The decrease in property crime could be due to a combination of things, to include underreporting. While we have made significant efforts in high-visibility enforcement over the past couple of years, this trend of lower property crime seems to be the trend in the region currently. The sharp increase in our violent crime numbers began in 2022, and this resulted primarily from the crime of aggravated assault, where in the past, we reported only the most severe crime in any investigation to the FBI. Now we report every crime in every, per investigation, and I'll give you a couple of examples of that. So to illustrate this, let me give you a scenario. So let's say that two people break into a car dealership after closing hours. They take cash from the dealership office safe, and they steal two cars from the garage. In this scenario, under the previous reporting system, the only crime that would be reported to the FBI is the burglary with forcible entry. Under the new system, all three crimes of burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle of our graphics for our supervisor car. In those vehicles, the gold represents the gold badge that our sergeants wear. So it's kind of a tip of the hat to the sergeants. And recently, we rolled out our annual report for 2023, and that is available for download on our website. And I wanted to take just a few moments to highlight some statistics from the report. So this is five years of crime data we're looking at now. And when looking at overall crime numbers, we have a current trend of our property crime going down and our violent crime going up. The decrease in property crime could be due to a combination of things to include underreporting. While we have made significant efforts in high visibility enforcement over the past couple of years, this trend of lower property crime seems to be the trend in the region currently. The sharp increase in our violent crime numbers began in 2022, and this resulted primarily from the crime of aggravated assault, where in the past, we reported only the most severe crime in any investigation to the FBI. Now we report every crime in every per investigation. And I'll give you a couple of examples of that. So to illustrate this, let me give you a scenario. So let's say that two people break into a car dealership after closing hours. They take cash from the dealership office safe, and they steal two cars from the garage. In this scenario, under the previous reporting system, the only crime that would be reported to the FBI is the burglary with forcible entry. Under the new system, all three crimes of burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft are reported. So it looks like we might have more crime than we actually do. I'll give you another scenario. A person breaks into a home and begins to steal jewelry. The homeowner comes home and catches a suspect in the act. The suspect assaults the homeowner, causing significant injury, and flees the scene with the jewelry. The crime of robbery would be the only crime we would report under the old reporting system. In the new system, all three are reported. So this new reporting system can potentially have an impact on our crime numbers. We expect to establish a more normal baseline once we have a couple more years of data under this new reporting system. So how do we stack up against the national average? So our violent crime here in Walnut Creek is 45% below the national average. So I consider this a safe city. However, if you look at the 2022 numbers, our property crime rate is 46% higher than the national average. And I'll speak to that in just a moment. If you look at five years of data of our crime rate per 1,000 residents, there is a trend that it's going down. And this is consistent with the regional and national trend. Year to date, crime is currently trending 1% lower than it was last year. All right. So property crime represents 90% of our total crime last year, and shoplifting and theft from motor vehicles are two of the most significant classifications. General larceny and other theft crimes are also contributors. We have a significant amount of retail space here, a daytime population that more than doubles, two major freeways, and a BART station. And all of these present their own challenges. It's important for the community to help us harden potential targets and remove crimes of opportunity when possible. I'm hopeful that future legislation will assist us by keeping repeat offenders off the streets. In 2023, you can see that our dispatch center processed quite a few phone calls. 75% of our 911 calls come into our, coming into our center are generated from a cell phone, which is completely different from what it was 15 to 20 years ago. And between incoming and outgoing calls, we process about 271 calls per day on average last year. 87% of our arrests in 2023 were a result of calls for service. That's when somebody calls us for help. And the remaining 13% result from officer initiated activities such as pedestrian stops, traffic stops, and crimes that officers are on view or witness themselves. Now, I'd like to talk about staffing just briefly. As you can see, our annual average vacancy numbers in our sworn ranks are seemingly high right now, but this is due primarily to the added positions of five officers. So we're still playing catch up on that. And I'm happy to say that the, that these numbers are out of date now because earlier, I finalized a couple of job offers that I'll be making over the next couple of days for some lateral officers. So we're still doing well when it comes to our recruitment efforts. Speaking of lateral officers, 67% of our sworn ranks are lateral here from other departments. We believe about five to 10 years ago, that number was even higher. But I think this is a good balance. We continue to attract very experienced lateral officers from other cities and counties throughout the state. Department vacancies overall, there's, this is a current snapshot of our vacancies today. We're 91% filled in our sworn ranks and 88% filled in our professional staff ranks. So with that being said, our recruiting efforts are more important now than ever. And last year, we entered into a contract with Epic Recruiting to create a new recruitment campaign. Part of that contract include the creation of new recruiting website, which is now up and running, and the production of several recruiting videos. And I'd like to show a couple of them to you now.
I get up every day. I really have a good life. I'm happy to work hard. My job provides for a lot of my quality of life. We've had bees for a number of years. The hives that we've had, they've been really calm and really friendly bees. The more bees I have, I get a lot better plant health in my garden. They take care of me. There's a lot of things with beekeeping, like a lot of things in law enforcement. Some people, you can't change the circumstances. You can't change your attitude necessarily. There's a lot of stuff I can't ask a bee to do. I'm happy to come to work. I'm happy to know that my life's still waiting for me when I leave work and go home.
So that video is titled Well-rounded and features motor officer Connor Davis. And I think the video gives a public a glimpse into what makes our employees and our culture here so special. And the next video highlights our special assignments and speaks to those seeking maybe some adventure in their career. Okay, so we launched our Epic Recruiting campaign in July, and in the first month, we reached almost 10,000 ad views with a 10% click rate. And that's where people are clicking a link to see, to get more information. And 291 people clicked the Apply Now link. We'll be looking at our internal data in the future to conduct a before and after comparison of our applications received, just to see how well this campaign is working. And our well-rounded video reached over 30,000 views on Instagram. So pretty incredible reach. We now have a production environment of Paragine, which is our data integration intelligence software. Staff is currently learning the system and building tools that are custom to what we need here in Walnut Creek. And this tool has already proven to be a valuable tool in solving crime. In fact, I think there's a detective in the back that may have even solved a crime while being trained to use this new technology. So it's really proven to be quite useful. We recently launched our, our new website, which has a completely new look and feel. And we continue to improve this website and welcome any feedback to enhance the user experience. And we continue to obtain community feedback through the Axon My 90 platform. This data is obtained after, after an officer clears a call for service, and the reporting party or victim has sent a text survey. And as you can see, 85% of the respondents have a positive view of the department, and 90% felt they were treated with respect by officers. And we continue to answer, enhance our culture with a commitment to active bystandership and peer intervention. And to date, 95% of our sworn personnel have received the training. So over the next few months, we will be bolstering our commitment to traffic safety. We have a new motor officer who will be deployed in a couple of weeks. And throughout the summer, we have conducted several high visibility enforcement operations. These operations have been complaint based, but data driven. Our goal is to change driver behavior, and we will continue our education enforcement efforts to enhance pedestrian safety. And we've bolstered our downtown patrols throughout the summer months, especially on the weekend evening hours. Our reserve officers have played a vital role in these efforts, which have been also largely based on the analysis of data. Much like we've done in the past, we plan to have a special holiday deployment to help prevent and deter crime. And with that, I'm surprised I got through that so fast. Was worried. I'll answer any questions the council might have.
We'll slow down, I'm sure, right now. Is anybody, yes, Kevin, please?
Thank you so much, Chief. Good info because this is probably one of the most, most, most things that people ask about when we're out in the street talking to people, whether we're at our farmer's market booth or whatever's going on. Couple of quick questions. First of all, you said 85% have a positive view of the department, 90% treated with respect. Those seem great to me, but is there a comparison you can give us with other departments? Is that a good number? I mean, it, it looks like a good number, but how does it compare with other police departments and cities?
We do have comparison data. Captain Andy Brown is here. Not to put you on the spot, but I, I think from the last time we checked, we are above average. Yes? Okay, he says yes.
Above, above average. Okay.
Meaning we're above other departments on average. That, that 85 and 90% approval rating.
Great. And a question that we probably all get, our people that know us through neighbors or whoever else, is people are rolling through stop signs in my neighborhood. They're speeding. They're going, no, I take my life in my hands when I cross Ignacio Valley Road. If they have these complaints, who should they direct their emails to?
They can use the Contact Us email address, the general email address on our website. They can call dispatch. We take all of those complaints, and it goes to our traffic office. And they use those complaints to formulate a deployment strategy. So every complaint that comes in, we do address.
And the website is, for the record?
Yeah, if they just go to the Walnut Creek PD website, they can Google it. They can use the link to contact us there, or they can email any one of my staff members or call the main number.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for the information. In terms of the report, the, the one item that stuck out, and I think it stuck out to you too, was the property crime.
Yes.
And that were 46% higher than the national average. Has that number stayed static, or have we seen a spike over the last few years?
Well, property crime is actually down, which it's down quite a bit, which is surprising, but it's something that my colleagues in the county have also seen. We've all talked about it. We think it's due to underreporting. There could be some glitchy stuff going on with neighbors. We're just not entirely sure. But we have a target-rich environment, as I've mentioned before, with so much retail here and two freeways coming through, a BART station. We have parking garages, so vehicle theft is, is a common problem. I would love for that, that number to be lower, but much of that comes from people not hardening targets. They're leaving items and vehicles in plain view. And then the retail theft is just a real challenge that we have here in California. And we're hoping that some better legislation will help us curtail some of that.
Okay. And in, in terms of the national average, then it's, we're being compared to cities of comparable size, I assume, but all across?
So I, from a recent study in 2022, I took the information that was based on populations of 100,000, converted our data to match with that. So it was comparing apples to apples. That's how I arrived at that number.
In kind of our, our region, we do have some other cities with kind of, you know, heavy commercial presence, close freeway proximity.
Yes.
How are we compared to them?
It's a good question. I won't dime any cities out, but there's one city, there's a couple of cities in the area, one in the county, that has a higher property crime rate than we do. But there's some other cities that are more bedroom communities, one in particular that has half the property crime we do. And that's probably something that's a little bit more normal. But we are not a bedroom community, even though we have a lot of rooftops here. We have a lot of retail crime, much more than most like cities. We have a unique downtown with such great access with all the parking garages and all of the other things that bring people here, such as restaurants and the nightlife.
Are there any other items that, you know, we could be helpful for that are on your radar in terms of trying to bring that number down and make a dent in, in kind of some of this property crime?
Well, I always say, if you see something suspicious, say something or call us. If you see somebody that's committing a crime, call us. One of the biggest issues that we had a few years ago was just general apathy, when people would see somebody stealing from inside a store, and they just wouldn't call. And sometimes that was even the retailers. So we've worked really hard to work with our local retailers to call us every time. We're still gaining momentum and traction there. And we've also gone so far as to do undercover operations to partner with area retailers, asset protection, and loss prevention staff to apprehend shoplifters. And we just did one recently.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And we had one in May, and appreciate getting one at the start of the holiday season or the fall, because we know that people need to be reminded to take care of their stuff. So let me see if I get this right. Violent crime is down significantly, but property crime is up. Is there a way to compare what percentage of our crime is property crime versus violent crime?
So, just to make sure I understand. So our violent crime is lower than the national average, but it is actually up. It's trending up.
I'm sorry.
But we have generally low numbers of violent crime.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, you said, is there a way to compare?
What percentage of our crime is property crime versus?
90% of our crime is property crime.
All right. So then, our number of property crime is higher than what we want. But it sounds like when you compare us to other communities that would be like us, how do you think it compares?
I think it's about normal. And it's just a problem right now in California. I don't want to say it's an epidemic, but close to it. And that's just because we have so many repeat offenders. And if they haven't met the dollar threshold of $950, and they don't have warrants out for their arrest, then we're usually forced to issue them a citation, and they go on their way. Where prior to that, we could actually arrest them and book them into jail.
This isn't your choice.
This is not my choice, no.
This is basically state law that has either been adopted at the ballot box by the voters or passed at the Sacramento, the legislative level.
That's correct. This is a culmination of the effects of Prop 47, Prop 57, and AB 109. The legislation goes back well over a decade, and I think it's just finally caught up with us.
So lock your cars and don't leave things out in the open.
Yes, that's good advice.
No, that was your advice the last time you were here.
I was giving, I was drawing you a bone. You could have, you could, you could own that one.
Thank you.
You done? Mayor Portem, please.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Couple of questions. I got to talk to a couple of the officers that were working on the loss prevention special project that you guys did the other day. Are you working proactively? I know underreporting is a big problem. Are you reaching out and saying, see what we're doing to other retailers in the area to help them incentivize them to, to report?
Yes. Well, number one, we did advertise that last operation on social media that got a lot, a lot of good traction. It gets people talking, and that's what we want. We want communities to talk about this issue, to partner with us. And yes, we are going to partner with other retailers on similar operations in the future. But we're not going to reveal it ahead of time, of course.
You're not going to say, oh, don't go, yeah.
That's right.
That's fine. With the advent of the A3 program, are you seeing a difference in the mental health calls that your officers are taking? Are you seeing any kind of changes there?
Yeah, it's a really great question. We don't have a perfect way to capture that data, because we try to be careful of bias and labeling things a certain way. We're looking at that. But I do know that, because I've seen some initial dashboard data that the county has released, that there's many Walnut Creek calls for service that have been either filtered to or transferred to A3. So as far as I know, it seems to be working really well.
So just anecdotally, you're thinking the program is helping everybody involved?
Absolutely. It's a resource that the community didn't have before. We're hoping to get some, some better data on that with some, the recent technology that I mentioned. We'll try to capture, you know, better data to understand what's working and what's not.
So I'm going to interrupt. Oh, are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, okay. Would, would somebody explain what A3 is? I know what it is. I, and I can only remember two of the As, which is access and.
Anyone, anywhere, anytime.
Yes, it's, it's for the, for the mental health situations that maybe aren't crimes, just people who have issues. So I understood that there was a statewide task force working on the, the gang crimes, the, the, is, is that an imaginary thing?
No, we do have, yes, we do have a statewide task force for organized retail theft. And yes, and we will be working with them in the future as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, Matt has another question.
Two more. On, I know that in the past, the department's been pretty active with participating in drills. We had a wildfire evacuation drill in Rossmore. I think there have been some active shooter drills done at major employers over the years. Do you have anything on the, on the calendar or planned or scheduled in the foreseeable future?
We usually try to do something like that once a year. And usually on the active shooter drills, if we do something on a school campus, it's during the summer months when the school is not in session. But we typically try to do something like that every year.
Okay. And then in terms of recruitment, I know we had an item, maybe a few months ago, that came in terms of a budget item, approving the contract for the services. And the videos look very impressive. Have you seen, and we've seen the click rates. Have we, have we, has it resulted in actual hires?
Well, we've hired quite a few people. We've definitely. We've definitely had some forward momentum. I don't know if it's directly attributed to that. We're working with our HR department to try to collect some of that data and better understand it. It's really, it's early in the process, but hiring's looking good.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Please.
Thank you. I wondered if you could take a minute and explain, in addition to the A3 program, which is county-led, what you're doing subregionally, I think it's Martinez and Pleasant Hill and Walnut Creek, on your own version of crisis intervention training and capacity?
Certainly, yeah. We do have several officers with specialized training, which is above and beyond what the average police officers get. And they're available to respond to calls for service throughout the county as needed.
So, but what's the partnership with the other, is it, have I misinterpreted something?
No, well, part of that program is, there's some discussion right now of who's going to own that program. So it's kind of in transition. So to be honest, I'm not sure who's going to pick up that battle. But prior to us, or it was San Ramon. But the important thing is that we still have the officers who have the training, and they're still an available resource throughout the county.
So we have multiple officers who have this crisis intervention training in addition to the, I guess, thirty-four teams that the county has in the A3 program?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I'm not seeing any more questions, so thank you very much. And I'm going to take this opportunity to thank all of the people in our police department. They are an extraordinary group of men and women and dedicated so much to the service of our community. And I'm going to say without a doubt that they do a wonderful job. And I don't know a single one of them that I've ever met that I just didn't want to have them over to dinner. So they are sweet, sweet people besides. So thank you very much, all of you, for what you do for our community.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and I couldn't agree more.
Hey, the next item on our agenda is the presentation from the Development Services Department.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Erica Vandenbrand, the Community Development Director. So today I have a brief presentation about our development services. So development services here at the City of Walnut Creek is more than just simply one department. It's actually a partnership amongst several. So our economic development function within the City Manager's Office, Community Development Department, and then Public Works. And all three partners are absolutely necessary in order to get development to occur within our city. So I'll share with you, when I first joined the city two years ago, one of the most curious questions that I would get whenever a developer would come in, and they'd say, well, what does staff think about, you know, this project? And it was always curious to me, because it was more what they thought as the developer about the project and what they wanted to bring forward to the city. And so I think after a lot of work and effort amongst our three departments, we have started about a year and a half ago to focus in on three key areas. So first is the customer experience. So it's less about the staff and it's more about the customer and what the customer wants to achieve in the development pathway. We've also focused on process improvements and then collaborative problem solving. And this has occurred in a number of different ways. So in each department, there have been initiatives and efforts to work together with staff. But as a team together, there has been training and then weekly meetings in which we go through and, you know, essentially work together as a staff to be able to elevate what our processes are and how we look at customer service and joint learning, and also collaborative problem solving. Also in there, we've tried to foster curiosity and then having, you know, more customer-focused approach, so that whenever a customer comes into us for development, that we ask them what they're trying to achieve, and we try to get them to a path to yes as opposed to a path to no. And so that we are the, I guess, the partnership of how might we as opposed to just simply regulators. Now, in service to that effort, we've done several things that are trying to be more transparent and then also more, you know, just sort of demonstrative within the community. So what we've done here, this is a major projects, a major development projects map that was put into place just over a year ago. And so anyone in the community or any developer coming in or US council members can go to the website, the city's website, and look graphically on the map about the different projects that are underway here with the, within the city that are being developed. And if you were to click on one of the projects on the left-hand side, not that you can see that because they're so small, but if you click on them, you would be able to find out what the individual projects that are going on. So like 699 YVR or, you know, the city, sorry, City View Mixed Use Project. So to be able to see what, you know, the project is about, how many units, if it's housing units, et cetera. And then there's also a separate section on our website that has more up, you know, has an up-to-date, it's updated each month about progress that's happening for the major developments. So there's actually quite a bit of information on the city's website. We've also implemented electronic plan submittal. And so then instead of having everything, having to go, you know, through manually through the counter and so forth. So what that does is that there is a online permit portal, which serves as sort of, you know, the Grand Central Station for everything coming in. And as of this past April, all plans need to be submitted electronically. But it allows that plan submittal to occur 24/7. And it also, at a staff level, creates efficiencies because we have the ability to conduct simultaneous review by multiple staff. So it doesn't have to go sequentially. And so that's helpful because that provides more problem-solving capacity. Well, okay, maybe we'll get there. Okay. Thank you. So, you know, you had a lot of sexy things happening that, you know, this evening in terms of dogs and, you know, lots of videos, et cetera, from PD. We're not that way. We're a little bit more nuts and bolts and so forth. But we have a number of how-to videos and guides on the website on how to be able to access this permit portal. Now, unless you actually have an account, you don't know what's behind that, you know, curtain number two, so to speak. But there's quite a lot there. And this is just, you know, some examples. So if you're trying to go through and upload a, you know, upload some plans and so forth, that allows that to occur. If you are a homeowner, for example, and you want to know where a permit is at, and your contractor is saying one thing and you're scratching your head, you can go on with your own account and look over there too and see whether it's in the contractor's hands or whether it's in the city's hands when looking at delays. We also have solar permits, which the state has required us to provide, you know, online access to, et cetera. But electronic solar permitting, so to make that a lot easier. And so that was launched this past, at the end of last year. Now, building inspections, it's one of our favorite things. So up until this past spring, the way that people would find out about when their building inspections were to occur was that they'd have to call, you know, sometime between eight o'clock and eight-thirty every day. But we've changed that. So you can still call, but it's not necessarily the preferred way of doing it. You can go onto the city's website. And as you see in the lower right-hand corner, there's a list that occurs there eight o'clock every day. It's like, here's all the inspections that are happening and so forth. So that's transparent. But again, if you want to know about your specific property, you can go onto your, you know, go onto the SL website where you have an account. You can also look up when your inspection is. So there are many different ways to be able to find that information. Now, then there's pre-reviewed ADUs or access-free dwelling units. So this document was put together, the handbook, in October. But then this past spring, it became live. And so that we have pre-reviewed plans, which are available to the public. And essentially, they're ready to be used. Now, a little caveat over there, you still need to get a site plan and prepare the site and deal with utilities and so forth. But in terms of construction plans and so forth, they're here. So they're already pre-reviewed, so they don't need to have, homeowners don't need to incur additional costs. Give you a little bit of a taste of what these look like. So we have a studio plan that comes in, you know, different flavors, cottage, modern, or ranch. So these are on the city's website. Similarly, same flavors but for one bedroom. And then slightly larger one bedrooms. And so, you know, here are pre-reviewed plans that are easily accessible and available to folks in our community. We've also gotten lots of information about SB nine lot splits. And so people go like, well, how do they, how do we do this? And, you know, they've heard about it, but they don't know. So we've put together a little cheat sheet over here to help with regard to that. We've done similar things for other pieces of legislation to help SB 330, SB 35 for the development community. Similarly, we're in the process of changing design review that occurs within the city. So as I'm sure that you're all aware, that we, that you adopted and approved the residential and residential mixed-use design standards and guidelines. Also, as part of that process, the process was changed. So there are no more loop arounds. So that created efficiencies. The non-residential design guidelines are being presented to council on the seventeenth, so a sign of things to come. And then recently approved the contract for signage standards, so that that effort's going to be starting this fall. And essentially to be able to update those to make it easier for development to occur for signage. Now, this is something, this is one of our best-kept secrets, I think. So that from, there's a little app called See Click Fix that is there. You can put it on an Apple or Android phone. And this app allows you to, once you sign up for it, allows you to take pictures and send it in. So if there's road damage, like a pothole, debris, personal property, noise from construction occurring too early or too late, weeds, debris, et cetera, that can all be populated through. And it's like a little bitty test case of a customer relations management system. Because what happens is that whenever these, these issues get reported, they go to either our code enforcement or to our Public Works typically. And it's a non-emergency type of reporting. But then, you know, we're able to then find out and then follow up on those issues. Lastly, so before we get to questions, the city did receive the Pro Housing designation. And that Pro Housing designation, beyond, you know, you wouldn't think about it, like, how does it work in terms of a development environment? But what it is doing is providing a fair amount of accessibility to new dollars for affordable housing. So for 699 YVR. And then also to help support infrastructure improvements within our capital improvement program. And so in addition to that, there are other types of funding that the city is eligible to apply for in order to help support additional affordable housing. So that's a very specific type of development. So with that, that's just a brief snapshot of what is happening within the development services ecosystem. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I bet there are a few. I'm going to start with Councilmember Silva.
Thank you so much for the report and the presentation and for what not only your team is doing, but this also goes to economic development and public works. So when you look at all the things and the improvements, many of which are probably unknown, what do you think is the top three things you want to tackle next? And the biggest challenges that are going on that are frustrating the customer or frustrating us?
So we have talked about a number of different things. So that from a customer's standpoint, really leaning in further and trying to hear more of the voice of the customer. And so there are some consistent frustrations that we've heard, like with signage and so forth. We've also heard, you know, other issues in terms of how quick it is to turn things around and so on. And we're trying to make things more transparent to be able to, I guess, separate out legend and lore from reality. Because sometimes it is indeed our fault, and we're trying to improve on that. But then there are other times when contractors may not exactly, you know, be on time, et cetera. And it's easy to blame the city. So just having that transparency there and allowing us to then focus in on the areas where we need to focus in on and that we're more customer-forward focused. So I think that's one thing. I think that the second thing is in terms of process improvements and efficiency, taking more time to be able to look through that lens of the customer, mapping out the journey, and then trying to find ways to speed it along. Because in the development community, time is money. And we recognize that. And so trying to reduce the amount of time that it takes to get through the process. I think the last thing, if you're asking me for three, is that trying to be able to find ways to leverage technology. And so we're really focusing in on trying to get more geographic information system support using technologies that leverages that so that we can do things faster and more efficiently with the use of technology.
Do you find that there is a significant difference between the size, scale, and scope of the type of project? A homeowner who comes in to do a remodel is probably having a very different experience from a residential developer that's building a hundred-unit apartment building. Similarly, a single, small business owner versus a Broadway Plaza?
That is definitely true. So we have to play all ends of the spectrum. And so for the homeowner that has never done this before or has a contractor that seems like they may not have done it before, we have to be very patient and help lead them through the journey. For the other end of the spectrum, for someone who is a very sophisticated developer who is trying to deal with, you know, very complex infield types of projects that require complex engineering, we need to be able to listen to them and better understand what they need to be able to do to get a very dense project in a very compact area. And this is something that, you know, we're trying to develop the skill set. We've been hiring people. We've been listening a lot to our customers about what kinds of needs they have whenever they're coming in. And so we're really trying to develop that expertise also.
And I don't mean to hog this, but one of the things that I'm not sure people realize is how many different, other different agencies are involved in this outside of the City of Walnut Creek. And that makes the city different than many cities. Would you like to elaborate on that? And was I vague, was I clear enough to give you a sense of what I'm thinking about?
So, you know, there are many other organizations. So, you know, PG&E, East Bay Mud, you know, just as a couple of examples. They have their own timelines. They have their own methodologies, et cetera. But even then, we're trying very much to be able to be collaborative partners with them so that, for example, Charles had arranged last Friday for a meeting with PG&E so that we start developing those relationships. For them, it's like you are in your place in the line. But there are certain things, I guess, if you have a relationship and that you're able to then coach your, coach our developers and people that are going through about having, you know, paperwork in on time, et cetera, gets you through that line faster. And also doesn't put you at the back of the line because you don't, you're waiting along, you know, waiting to get things, paperwork in and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did Cindy leave us any other questions? She took away mine, so just. Matt, please.
Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing with Development Services. You know, one item that we talked about at last, our last priority update, was getting general plan ready. And I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about the timing and the scope of that?
Well, we will certainly be able to talk about that more whenever council's having your priority-setting meeting. But what we have been doing is that we've been focusing on getting our house ready, our house in order first, in the ways that I just described. We've also been focused on trying to build relationships in the community, build relationships with the development community to look at what might be possible as we go into the future. We've gotten feedback on, you know, there are certain elements within our plans, within our current general plan that. our current general plan, that are highly outdated, and what we need to be able to do there. But then even within the context of our two most recent specific plans, the fact that there have been so many, you know, general plan amendments that are coming to you points out that we need to do a better job in sort of looking forward and understanding not just simply what's possible from a planning standpoint, a theoretical planning standpoint, but from a practical, economic, and operational perspective. And so those are part of the sort of the us piece. We're also working on getting our house in order with basic data. And so, you know, unlike with PDE where they are able to come up with, you know, facts and statistics off the top of, you know, their head, or at least having it available at the fingertips, we're still working on developing that capacity. And so that's part of getting general plan ready, because it's really hard to say where we should be going if we're not able to clearly articulate where we're at right now. So those are just a couple of the things that we've been doing.
That's great. And, and maybe a more difficult question, and I don't know that it's a, I think there's been a lot of positive change. And I've seen it, and I think we've, the council's been at the center of trying to direct this, but we still get the occasional criticism that things haven't changed really much at all, or as much as they could. And how would you, I, I think if we're being honest, we'd have to acknowledge that's probably true. There's more work that needs to be done. And if you had to identify two or three kind of big-picture things, you know, that you think would help advance kind of streamlining the entitlement process and the post-entitlement process, kind of what, what are some of the things that are on, kind of in our work plan now, or that you would like to see us make progress on?
There are actually, I think, three things. And so, you know, first part is that we have really been working within this ecosystem of the three departments to cultivate curiosity and cultivate having the voice of the customer and understanding the customer's needs, continuing to do that sort of work, because this is a journey. It's not a destination. And so there's a mutuality about that, too. And so we're, we are learning, as they are also learning along with us. So that, that's one thing. I think that the second thing, though, in terms of, you know, trying to go the sort of the next steps are that as we're getting not only just general plan ready, but updating the general plan, there are a lot of things within our code that are from an earlier time and an earlier place where we, where the city's municipal code and our standards, et cetera, orient toward a place and space that is of the past and not necessarily of the here and the now and an infill environment and of the future. So that, you know, is another thing. And then also, just this, I think, as was alluded to earlier, there's a level of sophistication and a level of complexity that comes about when you're doing infill development. And so in understanding not only what those things are, but the economics that drive it is also key. And so, you know, I feel a little bit put on the spot, but that's what I would say. I'm looking like, hey, it is a team sport here.
Thank you very much.
Just checking in with Cindy Silva, Cindy Darling, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Erica. I think you've done a great job with community development and your time here. Couple quick questions. We heard from Chief Knox, we're not going to put body-worn cameras on community development staff.
Yes.
But I did like, I did like his idea about customer feedback. Do we have, or have we thought about whether or not we could, you know, somebody comes in to interact at the counter to do that customer service survey function?
So we're, you know, it's going to sound like I'm talking in code a little bit, but I don't really mean to. We have a project happening internally, citywide, called Apex. And so as one of those initiatives, customer service and the customer experience is part of all that. And so as that effort, we're having that bleed over, learn, you know, within our development services environment. And so we're trying to do those two things in parallel. I would expect that next year we start having more feedback along those lines and being able to do, whether it's more surveys or customer satisfaction, et cetera, because if we're able to learn through that, not only are we more helpful to the community, we'll be more helpful to you, too.
And then you talked about the number of different entities that have their fingers in permitting, you know, between water, wastewater, fire. Do we ever, I'm sure you guys do this, but regularly call those groups together on a complex project at the beginning to help in that mapping? Because I think that is one of the things I've heard from people. They're like, oh, I didn't know I needed to get a connection.
So I would say yes and no. And so yes, from the standpoint that for a more complex project, and as the need arises, we do convene, you know, folks to be able to talk together. But no, do we do that as, you know, do we do it as a matter, of course, for every single project and so forth, and map it out as part of the formal process? We, they are included in the various checklists and so forth. And we do make introductions, but we are not necessarily consistently bringing projects and everyone together to be able to have those conversations earlier on. And that is one of the things that we have talked about, to be able to do so that we're able to pre-problem solve with the customer, as opposed to getting further down the line, and it becomes an issue.
Thank you. And then last question, this was a hot one at Civic Affairs with the chamber a little while ago, was the idea of an ombuds person, that somebody, if somebody's having a problem, how they, who they could go to. And as a council member, there is a little value in that, because if they don't know where to go, they, kind of to me. But I haven't had that many lately. But anyway, do you guys have a formal way for somebody that's having a problem or doesn't understand to get some attention?
So we are working on developing that. We have a process that internally we call the mosh pit. And so when, and so whenever there is an issue that's brought to our attention, it's, we try to solve it, you know, understanding what the issue is from the customer's standpoint, and then solve it in a multidisciplinary way. We've also talked about being able to not just do that internally, but to reach out to the customer and have them part of the problem-solving endeavor. And probably two of our best examples with that have been with Toyota Walnut Creek, as we were trying to solve for various issues as that was, you know, moving through the process for design. And then also for some more recent projects that I don't want to call out specifically, but we've had the customer there in the room with us and trying to problem-solve around specific issues. So, you know, there's that. Is it always going to work? No. But then what we've also had been doing, whenever Angela was here, was to designate a person at various times as an ombuds person to help convene those meetings and serve as more of a neutral body so that, you know, a facilitator for that group discussion. And we're getting into that discipline of doing that more frequently.
Great. Thank you. I love everything you're doing with community development. You're really going in good direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. And I really appreciate you being at some of the meetings that are business-oriented, that we've been involved in the last couple of months. I think we've heard from the community, it's better than it was, and there's still a ways to go on that. And I certainly appreciate the work that you and your team have done on that. One of the things that I do get from some of the businesses specifically, but I've heard this from residents as well, is they'll submit whatever they're asked to submit, and then they may wait a week or two to get a response. And sometimes they don't even get a response acknowledging that it was received, and they're wondering if it went into sort of this black hole, or does it go, and then it go, or it goes to the bottom of the pile before being reviewed. And I think that what would be really helpful in working with the team is if we can get, if, when a project is now slated, okay, we know this is coming, we've been working on this, that the questions that are asked, there can be a turnaround time, maybe of 24 hours, just so that we can quickly then get that through. I could certainly understand if I were a customer and I was now waiting six or eight weeks because the questions were going back and forth, and it kept being a long time to get the responses. So I guess it's not a question, more that this is what I'm hearing.
Definitely understand that. And we've been talking about that internally. You know, sometimes it's a very easy kind of thing to be able to just turn it around within 24 hours and, you know, help resolve an issue. There have been other issues that on the surface might appear that, oh, that's an easy one to solve. I, you know, with regard to someone wanting to put in a pool, for example, in an unusual location, and then we work through it, and then we find out that there's an easement that we didn't know about, and a whole bunch of other things. So it entails more problem-solving. And there, you know, there's always a path through it, right? But sometimes that path through it may not be the most desirable from a city standpoint, or alternately from whether it's a homeowner or the property owner's standpoint. So there's oftentimes a lot of negotiation that needs to occur. But that having been said, I hear your point, and I think we all hear your point. We're trying to be more responsive and more communicative, even if that communication is, we can't give you an answer right now, but we're going to be working on it in the next three days, the next week, et cetera.
That's a perfect answer. Perfect. When I was in business, when I now, when I get back to people and say, I got this, working on this might be a couple of days, people are happy. If I don't get back to them for a couple of days and have not said that, they think I've ignored them, and then now I'm on the defensive again. But the answer you just gave is a perfect answer.
Way to go, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. All the questions I might have asked have been used up. So I'm going to just give a little story. I don't know if I legally can, but I'm going to give the story. I was at Farmer's Market, and some man came up about complaining about a pothole in the middle of the street. And I'm frantically writing down things, and Erica walks by, and she says, oh, I know how to do it, and you used that. And I didn't write down what its name is.
C Click Fix.
Yep. And, and I got credit, because they, the whole thing was fixed within a week or something, and I got credit for it. So thank you very much, Erica. I don't have a complaint.
It's our Public Works Department that fixed that one.
Yeah, you're good. Bravo, everyone. Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else you didn't want to share? No. Okay, thank you. Moving on. I did neglect, early on in the meeting, to announce the Zoom webinar ID, which is 827-2702-9556, with the passcode of 752932. I was trained to do that the last time I was mayor, and so forgive me, it's been out of fashion for a while. Consent calendar. Do I have anybody who would like to bring up an item? Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item 2G.
Thank you. Anybody else have a?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 2F.
2F. Anybody else?
Mayor, I'd like to comment on item 2C when appropriate.
Well, that's never happened to me before either. Okay. And, and that completely blew my brain out. Oh, does anybody in the audience want to make a comment about an item on the consent calendar? I'll pull this out. Just have faith in me.
So Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve items 2A, B, D, E, and H.
Second.
Excellently done. Please roll call.
Councilmember Welk.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Matt, you were first. Would you please take your item?
Yes. So I pulled item 2G, which is the Tice Valley Park Sports Field Lighting Project. And I just wanted to thank staff for kind of the dedication and hard work on bringing this project to fruition when it's developed and operated as early as next year, I understand. We'll have lights on the field out at, at Tice Valley Park, and that'll extend our soccer playing season, probably help with baseball, maybe lacrosse, and some other sports. And so I, I'm very pleased to see this come forward, and also I can give the staff report. I don't think I have any questions. I just want to say thank you, and also thank the voters who passed Measure O. A large majority of the funding for this project is coming from Measure O, as well as supplemented by some federal dollars that we have. And, you know, this enhances our quality of life, and it gets, you know, kids off screens, as we heard earlier, and solidifies our community as a place that values and sees the enrichment in youth sports and recreation. So I'm pleased to see this moving forward.
Yeah, I think I have a question or two from Councilmember Silva.
Yes, thank you. And I'll start by saying ditto, having been the field scheduler for the soccer club 20 years ago. It was always difficult during the late fall, winter, and spring seasons, when it would get dark so early, and kids were getting out of school at 3:00 and only having an hour, 90 minutes or so, to be able to practice. So this will be great. I had a couple of questions. Can you elaborate on this new procurement process that we're using for this? I don't think it's a new process, but it may be a first time for Walnut Creek.
Sure. Rich Payne, Public Works, interim Public Works Director.
Congratulations.
And Mayor, members of the council. So this procurement process isn't, isn't new. We've used it before on several other projects. One was the Garden Center, that remediation. We use the same type of cooperative bid agreement process. So it's, it's, we've used it before. It's not something we do all the time, but it does streamline the bid process for Public Works projects.
Can you explain how it's different than what we would ord, what the two ways of doing it are, and it seemingly saves time and money?
Yeah, so the, the traditional Public Works product, project process is typically, excuse me, typically you follow, you go, you put a bid, spec together, set of plans, you solicit bids from contractors in the area, they submit the bid, and you kind of go with a low bid. I've streamlined that process, but that's pretty much what you do. In this case, the, through the Sourcewell process, they do unit bidding process where they already go out and they do that pre-bid process for that type of work. In this case, it would be for the lighting systems. And so essentially what they would do is they would go out and solicit several bids for that, for installing a pole and a light, and that, that type of work, along with, you know, the installation. And they do all that pre-bidding process ahead of time. They pre-select the contractors using a selection criteria. In this case, there's several factors in that selection criteria that they use, and they land on a set of contract, contractors. And then they simply take our bid, our scope, and then they attach a bid to that, using the bid along with the, those other criteria to select the contractor.
So we're getting what we're looking for without having to do that front-end process? Somebody has done that at, at a national level on our behalf?
Yes. And it streamlines that whole bidding process.
And what's the timing that we expect? When are we going to be able to turn on the lights?
So we're looking at December, January for construction, and hopefully this project will be fairly simple and straightforward, and have lights by spring.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to move the, to award the contract 2405, the Tice Valley Park Sports Field Lighting Project to Musco Sports Lighting LC.
Second.
May I have a bid, please?
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Welk.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Darling.
Yes.
Mayor Haskew.
Yes, and that, yes, I called it the wrong thing, but you all got the right idea. You, you wanted to do item C?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to state law, I'd like to note that item 2C is an amendment to the city attorney contract. The amendment provides a 5% hourly rate increase effective August 1st, 2024, and a 4.5% rate increase effective July 1, 2025, subject to a satisfactory or better evaluation between the timeframe of April 1st and June 30th of 2025.
Thank you. I believe we passed that one when we went through the first time. No, we did. We already did it.
I'll, I'll, item 2C.
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, or a bid, whichever you prefer?
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Welk. Councilmember Welk.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Am I remembering there's one still outstanding? Yes, may I have the?
Item 2F is the authorization of the city manager to enter us into a joint powers-authority agreement with the county related to a pedestrian pathway on San Miguel Drive. And I was wondering if engineering staff, public works staff, could answer a couple of questions. So this is a very exciting project, because it'll go from the top of the hill at Newell, where it intersects with San Miguel, out to, through the city to the south, and into the county portion of San Miguel Drive to Adeline. Do I have that correct?
That's right.
Can you tell me a little about how much, what is the objective of the project?
Sure. It's Midar Boardman, City Engineers. So the project actually initiated when county staff reached out to staff of the city. They were exploring, they have something called a traffic mitigation fee. We call ours traffic impact fees, but same sort of idea. They were interested in expending some of those traffic mitigation fees and doing some kind of pedestrian pathway improvements in the Walnut Heights area. And so they had reached out to staff, and they said, "Hey, we're going to be surveying some county residents." This is, you know, where we were thinking. So there were two options, actually. They were looking at Mountain View Boulevard or San Miguel Drive. And in the end, they got a lot of feedback about preferences from county residents about San Miguel Drive. At the same time, city staff also did reach out to residents along our portion, because, you know, you can put in a pathway, but then it would sort of be a pathway to nowhere. And so it was a, the idea is really to complete a sidewalk network, right? Those county residents are in sort of a pocket of unincorporated county that really, all those residents are served by our schools, right? Los Lomas High School, they're walkable to the downtown, Kaiser, Broadway Plaza, et cetera. So, and the Iron Horse Trail as well. So we thought this is a really great connection to bring those people over into the downtown area. So with that, really, it's just this pedestrian improvement project.
So in our portion of it, it will be actually curb gutter and paved sidewalk. And in the county portion, it's going to be more of a decomposed granite pathway?
Yeah. So the county is looking at doing asphalt, an asphalt pathway and an asphalt berm, more of a rural-style feel. And we are actually looking to make improvements for a full curb gutter sidewalk that meets our city standard plans. That's, you know, a full improvement, really what we would desire to try and achieve along that street. It also provides continuity to existing sidewalk curb and gutter.
Because we also already have some portions of it in that area.
That's right. Yeah, further down.
And this is really a good way to approach this. This is not unusual to have these partnership agreements when you're abutting another local agency, and you're, like Pleasant Hill Road is in multiple agencies, or Tree Geary Road was done with Pleasant Hill, correct?
That's right. This is definitely, it's an opportunity project. And again, that county staff had reached out to city staff a couple of years ago. So this project has actually been in our, it was on our CIP, the Capital Investment Program that we brought to you, not two years ago, a year ago, a year and a half ago. Sorry, I'm thinking about future.
So we'll be carrying the cost for our portion, the county will carry the cost for their portion, and the county is going to serve as the lead agency in it?
That's right. That's the intent. So the county would be able to do all of the design, manage the construction, and we'd just be giving them essentially our funds to help support the project.
And if we approve, if we approve, giving the authority to the city manager to enter in the JPA, how long before we see a path? Because that's what people are going to ask, right?
Yeah. So I think the county really intends to, you know, all of this needs to get worked out. The, we're just in an initial design phase. That's, these are just concept designs. So this needs to go into the design. You know, there's some environmental clearance that has to happen, but this is likely exempt, because it's a pretty small improvement project. And then if there is any right-of-way acquisition associated with it, then that would need to get taken care of. But we're not anticipating that at all within the city portion. So, you know, anytime right-of-way kind of gets involved, it can lengthen the process. But I do think that the county intends to proceed with this in the next year or two.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're done?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's good news. So may I have?
Mayor Pro Tem Darling, I believe, had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I just, this was really big up in our neighborhood, and it was hotly debated between Mountain View and San Miguel. And I'm glad we're here, where we are. When this goes to construction, are we going to make sure that there, that people understand that it's a cooperative project between the city and the county?
Yeah, we'll definitely be working on a lot of outreach for our residents, and then with the county staff as well, speaking to the county residents, too. So there's mailers. We'll probably do some flyers and that kind of thing, some social media posts.
Yeah. It'll be great. Anyway, I'll be happy to move to approve item 2, whatever.
Thank you.
2F, second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Welk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Absolutely. Okay. Next is council member staff announcements and reports on activities or no, public communications. I am sorry. I really want to shorten this to the bitter end. Public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated, I think that's going to be enough, at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. If additional time is needed, we will do that at the end of the meeting, which will be shortly after this. So is there anybody here for public comment? Good. Thank you.
It's freezing in here. I don't know if anybody else is cold, but, whew. Anyway, my name is Barbara Yanis. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996. Regarding the public safety update that was provided in tonight's city council meeting, please remember that public safety can be an issue in the open spaces as well. Please be aware that simple activities like hiking, walking, jogging, horse riding, in our open spaces can be a public safety risk to Walnut Creek citizens. With no enforcement of the open space municipal codes, our open spaces can resemble, as some search to call it, the wild, wild west. Not only do mountain bikes travel on single-track trails that are not designated for their use, but now more powerful e-bikes are being used on those trails. In addition, you may be buzzed by a motorcycle. Everyone realizes the open space staff cannot be everywhere all the time, so infractions to the municipal codes will occur. But no enforcement policy puts everyone at risk if they use the trails in the open spaces. No longer can you have a quiet walk, run, and just observe nature or breathe the fresh air. You need to be aware at all times that a mountain bike, a fast-moving e-bike, or even a motorcycle can be upon you in a few seconds. City council members, mayor, and the mayor are officials elected to represent the community and to set policies and priorities. Municipal codes are policy items set by the city council. The enforcement of these municipal codes should be a city council priority to provide for the safety of the citizens. Enforcement of municipal codes must be a priority in our open spaces, as citizens deserve to feel safe while visiting the trails in the open spaces. One other item, the chief gave us public safety update today, and thank you for that. I just wanted to say I was happy to see that in your recruitment video, you did have a policeman going up a trail. So maybe there's hope.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for waiting us out, and thank you for being here. Anybody else want to step forward to public comment?
We have to go on Zoom, too.
Any Zoom?
There are no individuals on Zoom wanting to provide comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And now, we are finally up to item four, council members' staff announcements and reports on activities or requests.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no reportable actions from closed session this evening.
City manager.
I do have one update this evening. I'm pleased to announce that the city's Citizens Academy will be coming back after a hiatus that was induced by COVID. We're bringing that program back this fall. Tentatively, it appears the first session will begin October 8. And for those that may be listening who might be interested and not familiar with the program, this is an opportunity to learn about your local government, about your local community, to go on tours of places you may not be aware of, and see the behind-the-scenes operations, an opportunity to hear from the mayor and each of the council members, as well as several staff overseeing key programs. So if you're interested, stay tuned. We'll be putting information out very soon.
All right. Matt, would you start us off, please?
So as the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, I attended their August 15 meeting. I was able to give the city report at that meeting. Many of the items you already know, because we've talked about them. We had an update from the various different vice chairs from the chamber, and heard from many partners of the chamber, Walnut Creek Downtown, East Bay Leadership Council. In terms of future planning, we've got the East Bay Women's Conference scheduled for March 4 of next year, and I believe that will be at the Lesher Center, again, the third year in a row that we'll be hosting it here in downtown. And our art and, the Art and Wine Festival will be May 31 to June 1, and that will be held actually very close to here. I believe the details are still being worked out, but somewhere in the vicinity of City Hall, shall we say. While the construction gets underway for the pool in the community center at Heather Farm, you know, Bob Lynchide, who's here tonight, gave his update and also provided some outreach work that the chamber is doing in terms of a startup guide for entrepreneurs and new, and business owners. And also, they're doing a survey for business leaders, soliciting their input to help them with their priority planning. I also serve on the Recycle Smart Board and am on the vendor ad hoc committee, looking at new providers for our recycling and trash collection services. And we've separated that process between post-collection and collection. We're in the post-collection phase, so we're, it's not cart before the horse. There is some logic to this, to try to make the collection process more competitive. So we're in the post-collection phase, which includes things like transfer, processing, and disposal. And the ad hoc vendor committee has directed staff to continue negotiations. We're close to making recommendations to the full board, which will make a decision in October, and then we'll pivot to collection, the collection RFP process. And that rolls right into the Recycle Smart meeting that we had end of August. And we approved staff entering into an option agreement for a certain property in the Martinez area to potentially be leased by the authority for a truckyard facility, with the thought being that this would make the collection process more competitive, that collection service providers that may not have facilities in Contra Costa could still potentially bid on the collection services with the advantage of having this truckyard relatively close by. And then just rounding out my updates, my local community, I live in the Park Mead community, and the Park Mead Community Association hosted a neighborhood block party at the end of August. And so I'm just putting out, because it was a real feel-good event. There were about 150 people there. There were kids drawing chalk on the ground, playing, you know, hopscotch and jump rope. And everyone had a really good time, and it was a very nice, community-building environment. So I'd like to see more of that happening in neighborhoods all across the city. And that's my report.
We do that in the Foothill neighborhood.
Do you?
Yeah. And I know San Miguel, or the Rancho San Miguel neighborhood does that as well. It is a great event. Over the last, well, I guess, month, there was a terrific panel on homelessness, and I think the mayor, you're probably going to, you or the Mayor Pro Tem will be talking on this, I take it. But it was a terrific event. It was recorded, and I would recommend anybody that's interested in this, take a look at the city's website, because, or the chamber website, is it? The chamber website? Chamber website?
Chamber website.
Chamber website, okay. Because there was a lot of great information, and the people that were in the room have all of this information that they want to impart. So please do watch that. I was at the Aquanuts, their showcase on Friday night. They have an annual fall showcase, and it was terrific to see. This is a top-two program in the country. I was talking to a few different parents there, and was sitting right behind the mayor and her husband. And between us and Santa Clara, it seemed that there's a real competition there. But this is top-two of artistic swimming, or synchronized swimming, as it was known, in the country. And from little kids all the way up through high school, they are coached by Olympic athletes and coaches. I mean, my soccer teams, they had Coach Kevin Wilk. But the Aquanuts have Olympic champions. So this is just a terrific opportunity to, if your kids are interested, girls, boys, all of them.
I thought you were going to say you had players playing in Paris this year.
No, they, Paris, Texas, maybe, but not Paris, France. Right. But for next year, just keep an eye out. It is a terrific event. I was at the Labor Day Band concert last night in the park, 6, 7 o'clock, about 100 people were there. And it's just always great to see the Walnut Creek Band. And as warm as it was yesterday, it's just a perfect evening for this. And kids of all ages were there, from 5 to 95, and wonderful to see. A couple of specific areas I want to make sure that I touched on before leaving. One is that County Connection has also been on break. But there was an issue this last month that we are trying to resolve right now, and the wave induction system for recharging the electric buses at BART, the entire system has gone offline. What happened was, the company that is in charge of this can't be reached anymore. We, somebody finally got ahold of the CEO, but something is going on, and we think maybe they declared bankruptcy. We're not quite sure. But what it meant is that we did not have the power to be able to charge our buses. So a couple of things are happening. This is priority one for County Connection, and they are following up as we speak to make sure that we can get this all back online for our electric buses. And the second is that we're looking at getting larger batteries for the buses and seeing if that'll help, so we don't have to charge throughout the day so frequently. This is part of the consequence of being cutting-edge. The County Connection was the first bus route in the entire County Connection for Walnut Creek, and the manufacturer, the Gillig Bus Company, which is the largest bus manufacturing plant in the country, in North America, actually, the first to use electric buses. So we were truly leading edge. The problem is, when you're at the front of that, when changes happen, and there might be certain accessories that go obsolete, and those businesses are making different parts now, we're then left with potentially having parts in buses that can become obsolete. So great to be leading edge, also can be a challenge when the push comes to shove at the end. So I'll have an update on that during our next meeting, and hopefully it's that the electric buses are going back through. And lastly, the Walnut Festival is back. We heard that last, well, last year, of course, it didn't happen. We were all kind of caught surprising by that. But I was alerted by the organizer that the Walnut Festival is back, and they are getting volunteers right now. And if you go to their website, and I'm going to be looking at our communications manager to help get this information out, too, the website is thewalnutfestival.org. Make sure you have "the," thewalnutfestival.org for volunteer signups. You can go right now and sign up. It requires volunteers to have the Walnut Festival. So nobody say, "Why do we have the Walnut Festival when you haven't volunteered?" Let's all get on board and help volunteer there. We'll have that Walnut Festival back. And that's great news. So that's my report.
Thank you. Cindy Silva, please.
Thank you. Well, in addition to some really nice family time off, there was work that happened during August. The first thing I'll mention, I sit on the board of the two county East Bay Public Safety Radio System, and our finance committee is current-
And our finance committee is currently working on issues related to enhancing the policies we use for billing, accounts receivable, and collections, because it appears that some of our member agencies have not been paying their bills quite on time or they're going to the wrong person at City Hall. Anyway, we have a new executive director and he seems to be right on top of it and really pleased with that. And the board will be considering the policy recommendations on that in the coming weeks. Speaking of Recycle Smart, along with the Mayor Protem and the mayor, we attended the grand opening of the new location in Concord for White Pony Express. And the reason I'm, they basically are a leading-edge organization, nonprofit organization that is, really was at the forefront of developing the recovery of food in our area. And they started their work and they're helping us, they started in Walnut Creek, then they, they expanded and they were in Pleasant Hill, and now they are in a very large facility in Concord. And the way they help Recycle Smart is we have a requirement to have a certain percentage of our food recovered from our restaurants and grocery stores, et cetera, to meet state mandate requirements. And so they're a key partner of ours and we really appreciate it that they were expanded and that they're so successful. Speaking of volunteers, Community Service Day is now open for registrations. It is like it has been in the last 10 years. It is on the second Saturday in October. This year, the date does coincide with Yom Kippur, but for those who cannot attend or participate that day, there is flexibility in the scheduling in our Neighborhood Food Drive Project. The Neighborhood Food Drive Project is one of 35 projects that are being organized by nonprofits and public agencies across the city, so I hope everyone will sign up. If you want information, go to the City of Walnut Creek website homepage and then click on one of the homepage banners. But incidentally, this is not a City of Walnut Creek sponsored, well, it's a sponsored event, but it is not organized by the City of Walnut Creek. It is organized by the Walnut Creek Civic Pride Foundation and the Completely Volunteer Community Service Day Committee. And finally, in case you missed the notice, this weekend, the Ruth Bancroft Garden has been named the most beautiful garden in the world. Yeah, no kidding. It's in the world. And so congratulations to the Ruth Bancroft Garden.
Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you. As Councilmember Wilk already mentioned, that we have the Civic Affairs Homeless Forum and I was happy to represent the city on it. I worked with Molly Klopp and with Bob Lynchide from the chamber, Molly with Trinity Center, to pull together all the panelists to kind of walk through all the different components of homelessness outreach and services within the city. That is available on the chamber website and you can go back and look at it. One of the great things this time was, this was the first time that we had the A3 program, which was anywhere, anyone, anytime there, and they gave some really great stories about places or calls that they had taken where they had really helped people in a, in a moment of mental health challenge and had very successful outcomes. So that was really great. A couple of things that came, a couple of things that the group emphasized, one is that there are multiple ways, if you see somebody that's homeless and you want to get them help, there's 211, there's 911, there's the Walnut Creek PD's non-emergency number, but that all of those, it was funny, when we were planning, even those of us that work in the field all the time, we're like, well, when do you call? And the message that got out that day was, there is no wrong place to call. Just call and the systems are there so that you will get the help you need to the person that you identified. Couple of great ribbon cuttings, Bristol Hospice was out, they are out over by Planned Parenthood. We had a after-hours ribbon cutting for them, and it was a great group that works at hospice, and they're expanding their operations here in the city and they're a great partner. We also had the Chateau on, had their, their new opening. And I'm still not quite sure how you explain them, but it's like caviar and cocktails and, anyway, it was very cool. It was ready for the Instagram generation. And then this week Congressman Marc DeSalvier came to town at Walnut Creek Downtown and I walked him around to four different businesses, Torsept Thai, Tellus, Love and Chocolate, Elita, and introduced him to the, the owners of the businesses. He got a chance to talk to them about what's working, what's not. We talked about crime, we talked about all kinds of different things going on. And the, I learned that his staff are really in tune with the congressman, the fact that once he's having a really good conversation with somebody, he will not cut it off himself. And so they started telling me, okay, Cindy, it's time for you to stand up so that the congressman will stop talking and we could go to the next one, just to keep us on schedule. But it was a great chance to introduce him around in town and really showcase some of our great local businesses. That's my report.
You forgot the part where I was there too, holding the doors.
Oh, yeah. You and I were both there, yes.
Okay. So on my official side, I am the DRAA representative and I, we went and talked about, I learned about the update on the, on Broadway plans, which will be October 5th. I understand that there is some need. If you intend to go, you probably should buy your ticket now, or it even may be too late. But there are many new wonderful shows coming up at the Lesher and Bedford Gallery, and I encourage you to look at the Lesher Center website. Certain people would rip my arms off if I didn't remind the public that just because it's not summer anymore, that doesn't mean arts and rec aren't doing what they need to do to make your life better and happier and smarter. As a matter of fact, I did manage to get to a class where I learned a lot more about how to use my iPhone, so much that I remember half of it and I've got to take the next class over again so I get the other half. I've been to many of the things that we shared, the staff picnic, Heather Bellinger's retirement dinner, the Aquanaut Show, working on, we're, we know that two of our residents or people who are from Walnut Creek have won, oh, a gold medal in something called the Olympics. We're well aware of it and we are on it. There will be a Walnut Creek celebration for our champions. We just don't know what it is yet. And so let's see if there's anything else. For those of you that didn't get to see the, the Presto Event, which is that automated vehicle for Rothmore, there will be another one in Martinez at the hospital on the 10th of, whoa, I don't even understand mine, on the 10th, at 10, 10 a.m. I did a lot more than that. I should be tired. Anyhow, I think that's it. So any, if nobody has any other formal business, or I haven't screwed up on something else already, we are at the moment of adjournment, which we will do in memoriam of William Hartman. We're closing this event in his meeting. He was a planning commissioner and he passed away the 25th of June at the age of 83. He was raised in Berkeley and attended Stanford University for his undergrad education. He then served as a First Lieutenant Army Intelligence, Washington DC. During, during that tour, he supplemented the Secret Service at the Kennedy inauguration in 1960. He returned to Berkeley and attended Cal to study law. That's where he met his wife Pat, and they moved to Walnut Creek and raised their three children and were married for 49 years. Public service was in Bill's DNA. Following graduation with his JD, he started his legal career at the County District Attorney's Office in 1965. Later in his career, he opened his own law office and retired in Walnut Creek, and he retired in 2002. He was appointed to his first term on the Walnut Creek Planning Commission in 1972, and he was reappointed to the Planning Commission and later selected as chair. His first term on the Planning Commission included extensive review of the core area plan, which was the plan for development in the downtown area for 10 years. He served his community as president of the Mount Diablo Bar Association, as a member of his church vestry, spent time in retirement volunteering at John Muir Hospital, Loaves and Fishes, and other community service organization. He is survived by three children, seven grandchildren, a brother, as well as his beloved companion of nine years. Bill will be profoundly missed by all who loved him. The Walnut Creek City Council extends its heartfelt thanks to Bill for his commitment and contributions to the City of Walnut Creek and the greater Walnut Creek community. Thank you very much for being here at tonight's meeting and it is adjourned.